Good evening. Welcome to East Hampton City Council Meeting for Wednesday, December 21st. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by East Hampton Media on Charter, Channel 193, and live streaming on their e-media website. All councilor participants in these meetings are getting hybrid on the executive order by Governor Baker extended to March 2023, which allow us to do so. I remind both, the member of the city council and the public, to remain mute until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara.
Connie Denham here. Salem Derby.
Present.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
JP's having trouble.
He's having computer trouble.
Okay, he's here. Uh, Dave Munier. Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Owen Zaret.
Here.
Please stand up for the pleasure of the leaders.
The leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I will take a motion to approve the minutes from December 7.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from meeting of December 7, 2022. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, yes, Consul Sarat.
It's more the public record type of thing, but the events already passed, but the Hanukkah event was December 18th, not the 16th, but just to correct the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other Consular? Barbara?
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Uh, Tom Peak.
Aye.
Uh, Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public speak time. This is the opportunity to address the council regarding any topic not listed on the public hearing. Uh, I will give you three minutes to talk to the council. Please be respectful. Is anyone from the public that want to address something to the council? Seeing none. Um, communication for elected officials, board of committee. Uh, any Consular? Consular Riley?
Yes, um, thank you. So, on December 13th, the Board of Directors at the East Hampton Housing Authority voted to recognize the local tenant organization after organizing, electing leaders, and drafting bylaws, a process that started last February. I want to publicly thank the Board of Directors for doing the right thing and to congratulate the residents on their hard-fought advocacy for self-determination. The process was long, but the dialogue between resident leaders and housing authority staff shall continue in perpetuity, and with that, more challenges are surely ahead. I will, as I always have, remain an ally for housing justice and fairness. To those residents who reached out to me, thank you for trusting me. If there's anything that I can do to further your progress, you know where to find me. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Denham?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, remind the community that we are soon to own two Teslas, uh, and those Teslas are... The CEO of that company, through his social media company, actively promotes bigotry and, uh, actively promotes people who deny the Holocaust, and I think that that is a blemish on the integrity of this city. There are two individuals who were brave enough from this community to come forward and to speak out against the purchase of these vehicles, and as a committee of which I am a part of, or as a council which I am part of, we actively denied that. And I want to point out that I don't think it's acceptable that we own vehicles by someone who, who actively promotes bigotry. Uh, and I, I think that this was a massive mistake on our part.
Thank you, Consular. Any other Consular? Consular Kuzinski, can you hear us?
I can hear.
Okay. I just got a text that someone was saying that they cannot hear.
I, initially, I had been unable to, but I'm back on.
Thank you for letting me know, because I got just a text that someone was saying that couldn't hear us. Any other Consular? Seeing none. Mayor's communication. You don't have anything for tonight, Mayor, right?
No.
Um, I don't have anything. Vice President, you have anything?
I do not, Mr. President.
You don't have anything. Report from Senate Committee. Finance, Consular Rist.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next meeting will be January 11th at 5:15. So far, the only thing on the agenda is the library financial report for that evening. Um, there may be new things added at the first meeting in January. I also wanted to make a public statement regarding the property tech values and tax rate certification we received. Um, I want to make sure people understand that the low tax rate does not mean your taxes are going down. It is important to understand when the values of our property go up, the tax rate must go down to balance it. We are only allowed to increase taxes 2.5%. So if your house goes up this much, the tax rate goes down so that the increase remains close to 2.5%. And that's all based on the value of your property. It's important to recognize, and this goes to why we need affordable housing, that East Hampton property went up 14.7%. We have a professional company that judges, uh, our valuation when the tax rate is set, and that is a huge increase in the value of property. It's great for home equity, but it's not great if you're trying to buy a home, especially rent an apartment. But, uh, it's just important to understand that the $14.65 per thousand of assessment, um, is a low rate as compared to others, and it does have something to do, and the mayor may speak to this sometime, uh, the fact that our bonding of our new school was done in such a way that the cost of that bond as it's put into the, uh, as it's put into the tax rate is going down. So we are, uh, we are successful there. Just so people understand that, it is a low rate compared to other communities, but it's because our valuation is so high, the rate has to go down to balance it. Mr. President, that's all I have this evening. Other, uh, new businesses later. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Consular. Uh, police safety. Consular Sarat.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I don't have a report, other than the fact that we do have two items on our agenda that will require 90-day extensions. Those are, uh, the ordinance review committee's final report and the request to review safety of sidewalk on South Street and Main Street intersection at this time. I'd like to make a motion to request 90-day extensions for both of those.
Second. Second. We have a motion and a second to extend the ordinance review committee final report and the request to review safety and sidewalks of South Street, um, and Main Street intersection for 90 days. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Normally, we'd meet on the, uh, first Tuesday of each month, uh, and I spoke with the Chief of Police regarding a quarterly report, and he would like to present one a little later in the year, probably February, March, so we don't have any other pressing items on our agenda unless there's specific interest from anyone on the council for us to hold a meeting. I will likely schedule one for February. Um, and if something comes up, I can always schedule one in the second half of January after our next meeting, and, um, thus concludes.
Thank you, Consular. Appointments, Consular Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so because of scheduling issues and, uh, diagnoses of COVID, the appointment committee could not meet to discuss, uh, the appointments or the reappointments of any individuals before the committee. For the public to understand, our charter states that appointments shall automatically be approved if the city council does not move on mayoral appointments within 45 days. Um, so I am prepared tonight to put each person up for appointment and reappointment without recommendations from the committee, uh, if the council president allows it, and, uh, and, uh, welcome comments from the full council on how to proceed. Um, it is my understanding, however, that the council calendar does not afford us enough time to schedule another meeting before that 45-day period lapses. Is that correct?
Let's do it now.
Okay. All right, so then, uh, per our last meeting, oh, sorry.
Let's do it now.
I just wanted to say that per our rules, you giving us the fact that there is no recommendation, it still went to committee.
Yes.
The fact that the committee does not have a recommendation is fine, and the full council can vote on it.
Okay.
So let's do it now.
Perfect. All right, so then, uh, as we did in the last meeting, I'm going to make three separate motions based on, uh, expiration dates. So the first two are for new appointees. I move to appoint Megan Fowler to the Agricultural Commission, uh, with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2023.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve one appointment. Any further discussion? Uh, Consular Sarat?
Thank you, Mr. President, and this just, this applies to all, if I may address the Chair directly, Mr. President. Um, I'm assuming you did your due diligence and reviewed all the applications. You don't have any reservations at all with any of these and feel comfortable putting it forward?
So I, I reached out to the individuals that are up for appointment, and I did not receive any, uh, communication back. Nobody has explicitly stated any objections. Um, it, this is just one of those scheduling conflicts that came up, and the charter does not allow us any extra affordances here, so.
It's okay. Oh, just, that is my question, yes.
Any other Consular? Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, and next, I move to appoint Eileen Myers to the Council on Aging with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2025.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the appointment. Any other further, uh, for discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye. Motion passes.
All right, and then finally, I move to reappoint all of the following individuals with term expiration dates of December 31st, 2025. Laura Fisher, Agricultural Commission. Scott Redman, Board of Assessors. Marla Solomon, Community Relations Committee. Jay Ryan, Conservation Commission. Jay Ryan, CPA Committee, Conservation Committee Representative. John Brunner, CPA Committee, Historical Commission Representative. Connie Dawson, Energy Advisory Committee. John Pepe, Energy Advisory Committee. John Brunner, Historical Commission. Beverly Wodika, Historical Commission. Andrew Hunter, Parks and Recreation Commission. Brian Fink, Board of Registars of Voters. Frank Picard, Veterans Council, and then lastly, Lisa Jaffe, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint all those members. Any further discussion? Consular Sarat?
Sorry, Mr. President, may I address the Chair again? I just want to clarify your answer from before, uh, Counselors. So you reached out to all the reappointments and no one responded to you?
Only to the, only to the appointees.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, okay. Thank you.
Any other Consular? Seeing none. Barbara?
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consular Riley?
Um, and then there is, uh, no new business before the committee, so, um, when that happens, we will schedule a new meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Ordinance, Consular Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to keep this within the one-minute timeframe I have. Um, so we did meet, uh, Monday, the 12th, where we did, uh, we were able to take a vote on the vacant storefront ordinance, and we voted to send it out of committee, two to zero, um, for attorney review, so everybody can look forward to that coming to the full council hopefully soon. Um, we also had Counselors Zaret introduce, um, adding section 6-23, um, and gave us some perspective on what that entails, um, and we are continuing to discuss that. Our next meeting is going to be January 5th at 6:30 PM. Um, and you can see that I have one piece, which is the ordinance review committee's final report that needs an extension. I just will say that the reason why we need an extension for that is we did, uh, receive that final report quite a long time ago, but, um, we acted on many of the, uh, recommendations at our last meeting, and there's still a few more recommendations that are going to require a lot more time, which is why we decided to keep it on the agenda. So in the form of a motion, I would like to request 90-day extension, um, for that item, please.
Second. We have a motion and a second for, to extend for 90 days the ordinance review committee final report. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And that concludes, and I kept it within the one-minute timeframe.
Thank you. Consular Derby, I will take a motion to open public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, to open public hearing. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Motion passes. First item that we have is interdepartmental transfer of $53,539.59, Consular Rist?
So this interdepartmental transfer should be familiar to the council. We do it every quarter. It is the exact amount every quarter from the Charter Spectrum Franchise Agreement. This money is then transferred into the access account so that it can't be spent by East Hampton Media, and we do this every quarter, so it's a, a functionary thing we have to do.
Any Consular have any questions? Anyone from the public have any question or comment about this transfer? Rocky, do you have any question or comment about this transfer?
No, not just, I found to talk about something else.
Seeing none. Um, Consular Rist?
I move that the full council approve an interdepartmental transfer. The amount is $53,539.59 to be transferred from the PEG Access Account, $53,539.59, to be transferred to the PEG Access Account, $53,539.59, for the following purpose, to give approval to spend from the PEG Access Receipts Reserved Account for cable-related purposes consistent with the franchise agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the interdepartmental transfer of $53,539.59 to spend for the, from the PEG Access Receipts Reserve Account for cable-related purpose. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item is supplemental appropriation. Consular Rist?
Yes, Mr. President, we have $18,035 to pay for the Mountain View School grand opening event. The Finance Committee did approve this three to zero. There were some questions on process and the scale, which I'll allow the other Counselors to address, uh, but there's been a lot of misinformation, so I want to present some facts. This was originally requested by the school superintendent to the school building committee. Um, it included food trucks, but required people to pay for the food at that time. School building committee rejected it as not appropriate use of bonded taxpayer dollars, though it was a minimal amount. The mayor felt the celebration of the new school should include food and agreed to fund it using cannabis dollars. This is the mayor's appropriation, um, and it is not the school committees. The school committee had nothing to do with this appropriation and never did. Um, cannabis dollars are not tax dollars, they are, um, user taxes for each of the cannabis, um, establishments in town. This is one last thing that's important to note. The vendors are awaiting payment for this. If we decided to ask the mayor to fund this some other way, I don't know of any other fund that's existing that is not taxpayer dollars. Property taxes go into everything, whether they're free cash or stabilization accounts or whatever, so. Um, before I ask the mayor, Mr. President, to come forward, because she wasn't available at the Finance Committee meeting, I just wanted to give my personal opinion on this. The taxpayers are paying $60 million to fund the new school. Giving them a paid-for celebration using funds that are not taxpayer dollars to thank them is fine with me. Now, Mr. President, if you would allow the mayor to come, um, so she can, um, embellish my remarks, correct anything that I was mistaken about.
And the mayor?
Good evening. Um, the facts as Consular Rist, um, laid out was how it occurred. Um, the process of when and how, the asks, it was an ask by the superintendent to the school building committee, $4,700 was the budget that was approached. There was a logo already designed, um, and I, I spoke up directly at the meeting and said it was an inappropriate use of bonded funds, um, while a great opportunity and event, given a community celebration as the logo was designed, um, I said I would go forward and ask on cannabis appropriation because that was not taxpayer resident money, but a user fee, as you mentioned. Um, as far as the food truck, the original budget, and then getting up to 18, as a community celebration, I wanted people to come to the event unfettered. Whether they could or could not afford a food truck, I, I honestly did not care. I just thought that we should all celebrate together and that it should not be a worry on anybody's, um, discretionary or actual income, whether you can afford it or not or whatnot. Um, and it was a, a great way to give stable income to our local food trucks.
Thank you, Mayor. Any Consular have any questions or comment? Consular Peak?
Yeah, and I went to the event. I really liked it. I thought it was a great event, and I agree that the idea of, you know, providing food at the event so that everyone, regardless of what their budget was, could eat is perfectly understandable. I think the part that, it's not, it's not the expense really or anything, but the only part about this that gives me any pause at all is that, um, I don't know if I understand the timeline correctly, and I guess the part that really trips me up is why this couldn't have been discussed prior to the event, because at this point, the money's been spent. The vendors are awaiting payment. There is, like, we're not going to not pay the vendors, and out of them, like cannabis seems like a perfectly fine way to spend it. I'm fine with all that. I wish that, I think that it would have been, from a, from a council perspective, I would have appreciated being able to have some of this conversation prior to that money being spent, prior to the, anything being obligated to the vendors, because I might have had some feedback. I might have said, "Oh, maybe we don't need this," or, "Oh, we should really probably do something like this." And so when these things are, when these funds are obligated before it even comes to council, um, well, the first thing that I have a little bit of concern with is just, like, we don't get a say then in how any of that goes, and I feel as a Consular, I like having a say. Um, and the other thing is that I, I just worry for this and any future administration that it sets sort of a precedent that you, funds can be expended and then you figure it out on the back end. Now, that happens with, you know, someone gets injured, right? Okay, now you gotta do a bunch of overtime. This sounds, this to me, and I'm sorry, I'm rambling here, and I was really asking about the timeline, because to me, this feels like something that we could have, um, figured out ahead, like, prior to the event. I know this, you know, I had heard talk of cannabis funds being used on this weeks before the event, so I, I, I feel like people were, they certainly were aware that we were going to have a party, that we were going to have to pay for these things. I just guess I don't understand why we're having this conversation once all this money has been spent and the vendors are already awaiting payment.
Mayor?
I had no idea the community celebration was happening when I went to the school building committee, and I was going to vote no, because I don't think bonded money should be used. Food trucks had already been engaged, and a logo had already been designed, and it had been advertised.
But when was that, this meeting?
Um, I'm trying to think of what meeting.
It was September, I think it was?
I haven't, right. And then we, I asked for the filled-out, um, the full budget from the superintendent with the food trucks providing food per hour. I got that. Uh, the auditor wanted me to, rejected my cannabis appropriation without appropriate documentation. I needed to get a documentation from two dispensaries. They signed the amendment, and then it went forward.
Okay. Any other Consular have any question? Consular Riley?
Yeah, so, I, I actually didn't know that this party had even existed, um, until it was talked about in the paper, and, um, individuals from the school committee and, uh, and this, uh, school building committee emailed everybody. That was the first that I had heard about it. So I decided to do my due diligence and do a little bit of research, and here's what I have for itemized receipts for every cost that was incurred at the party. We have $1,500 to Cider House for logo and poster creation, $250 to Mount Tom's Ice Cream for five tubs of ice cream with cups and spoons, $430 to Hanky Digital Printing and Graphics for lawn signs and banners, $736.60 to Mantis Graphics for 60 custom-made T-shirts, $2,400 to the O-Tones for a live performance, $2,750 to Crazy Arepas for 250 meals, $3,620 to La Veracruzana for 327 meals, $2,990 to Ginger Love Cafe for 200 meals, $2,848 to Vegan Pizza Land for 216 pizzas, and $350 to Durham School Services, uh, for shuttling to the school. Now, for what I could account, it's $17,875.60. I don't know where the extra 160 comes into play. For me, that's not, uh, that big of a deal. Uh, where, where I have pause for this is that the idea of paying for this party with cannabis funds as it, as an, uh, a reason to say that taxpayers are not paying for it, uh, to me is disingenuous. It's true that if you never shop at a local dispensary in East Hampton, you wouldn't be paying for this party with your tax dollars if we approved the appropriation, but the Cannabis Stabilization Fund is still a community benefit that everyone should be benefiting from equally. Now, if I say yes tonight, and I agree to pay for the party with cannabis funds, which I still think there's a serious question about whether or not that's a valid reason, there's an opportunity cost of $18,035.60 that directly, that could directly benefit the community that no longer exists. So yes, technically, people in the public are not paying for this with their tax dollars, but they're still losing $18,035.60 because that is money in the cannabis fund that no longer goes towards public programming.[1679.16] And then the last thing that I'll say is this. The criteria for the Cannabis Stabilization Fund appropriations shall be reasonably related to the costs imposed upon the municipality by the operation of a marijuana establishment. To me, no dispensary's business in East Hampton directly affected the ability to have this party. So unless there's a compelling reason as to why we can skirt the appropriations process, which Councilor Peak has brought up, and by the way, that's a process that no other department does that. So this is, everybody else plays by the same set of rules and we're just trying to make an exception for this one spot. There's another way that you can appropriate money without coming to city council. And that's if there's an exigent threat to public safety, which requires the spending of money first. So as an example, if the Public Works Department is out plowing and they run out of salt, they don't need to come to us and say, we need more salt first, because the threat of having roads that are unsafe is of a greater importance to say, yes, go ahead and buy the salt and then we'll deal with it later, because it's a public safety issue. There is no public safety issue by having this party. And I don't see any way that the dispensaries businesses impacted the city's ability to throw the party. So with respect for the businesses, this is going to be a no from me because I'm not going to sign off on a process that I don't think is legitimate. And eventually, that pen rests in my hands. And I don't think that this was the right way to do it. I'm more than comfortable figuring out a better way to do this, but if this is the process that we're going to go for, then for me, it's a no.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything that Councilor Riley just said. I think that this was excessive. I agree with the original $4,700. You know, I think that people on the, on the building planning committee, they should be proud of the work that they did. I support that. I understand that. I also don't think that the vast majority of people in the community were going to attend this. I don't think that we have a, are recognizing that people in this community who are on fixed incomes, who supported the, the building of the, of the new schools, I think their commitment to vote yes on that originally took a lot for them to be able to do that. And I think that this just kind of, it, I think, doesn't recognize the sacrifice that people are making for that commitment. And I, I understand the idea of a celebration. I think that there should be something celebratory. I'm not disputing that in any way and no disrespect to the, to the schools or the committee or the mayor. I just think it was excessive. Like, that's all I'm going to say. I think it was, it was far more than was necessary. And I think ultimately, that rests with us to have to say yes or no to this. And, and, you know, I, I, there's comments about teamwork, et cetera, et cetera. And I think the foundation of good teamwork is communication. And I just think that there was a lack of that, as, as I think Counselor Peak kind of mentioned. I think we need to rethink our process a bit.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rist?
I don't disagree. The process questions are valid, but I'm a practical guy. There is no other fund available to this community that's not taxpayer dollars, unless our city auditor or the mayor can remind me of such a fund. Cannabis, yes, it is user-supported tax dollars, but it is not the same as property taxes, which are being used to fund and pay for the $60 million bond. So if we deny this appropriation this evening, it's going to have to be paid somehow. And these vendors are going to have to wait until January to get paid when another method is done. I would agree that maybe this should have been done differently, but I don't have any problem with the celebration and how it's being paid. We have paid many appropriations using cannabis stabilization. I think the problem that councils are having isn't necessarily with how it's being paid, but the process in which it was developed. So, councilors, let's not deny these vendors' dollars. I know you have concerns, but these vendors are our vendors in our community and we ought to pay them.
Thank you. Councilor Sarret?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to applaud my fellow councilors for their zeal and scrutiny and, I think, executing the duties of their elected office. The comments I've heard all reflect the type of due diligence that I would expect from my colleagues as elected officials. I want to thank the people who organized this event. For me, this new school is intimately tied with my experience as elected official. I hit the ground running in 2018. The council passed a resolution in support of the debt exclusion. A lot of us worked actively to campaign for it. And then, you know, subsequently after that passing, we watched the process unfold to have, for, since the high school, but then certainly for the first time, basically in a century, in terms of considering all the elementary schools, a brand-new elementary and then middle school, so the first time for that in almost 50 years. I would, I would agree that it sounds like there were some process points that may have been out of order, but it also sounds like there was a time crunch and an audible need to be called. And so I don't disagree that it would have been best if we could have approved this prior to the event. But it also sounds like, from my understanding, that it, that the way that the timeline unfolded, that that quickly became impossible, it sounds like the choice would have been to scrap, for instance, the food trucks or some other elements of this altogether, or proceed ahead with a plan to use these funds. I feel that there were elements of the celebration that reflected the impact that cannabis has on our community. The first certainly just being the fact that this was for a school, where our students learn and where we want to protect their socio, social, emotional health, as well as educating them around how to be healthy. We had the Health Department there. We had the Healthy Youth Coalition there. There were other tables there that reflected the public health nature of this. Is it a little bit of a stretch, what I'm describing? Sure, but I don't think it's out of the realm of using these funds. That being said, I don't, I'm not 100% disagreeing with the comments that were made, but I also feel that a lot of us have been looking forward to this for a long time. We suffered through a pandemic where our students had to learn via Zoom. A lot of them are behind now in terms of their learning. We did the best we could. And emerging from a non-physical form of experience with our community for rarely the first time to be able to celebrate this great new building that's really been one of the cornerpieces of our community over the last five years, I'm all for it. I mean, $18,000, if you were telling me how that so much it cost, I'd say, hmm, but I appreciate my colleague who laid out all the items and it adds up and listening to this individual light items, it's actually not that much. So I want to thank the people who organized this. I want to thank the mayor for being compassionate and making sure that this was accessible and erasing the potential financial disparities that could have come up and creating an equitable approach to this. And I, I appreciate the scrutiny of the Finance Committee, but I'm comfortable with this. And so I'm going to vote yes.
Councilor Peak?
Couple things, I just want to respond real quick, but I have a question after that. I, I don't know. I saw a ton of advertising for this. There were lawn signs out. There was the big light-up thing that we have for traffic warnings. You know, that was saying that it was there. I was, I was extremely aware this was going on. Some people have said, including Councilor Riley, that they were not aware that it was there. And I think that maybe there's some lessons learned there. But I don't think, I think that it wouldn't be fair to say that there wasn't really a good faith effort made to advertise a thing. I think once you print out lawn signs, you're clearly attempting to make it known that this is there. So I'm not, I'm not worried about that part of it. And the second part that I need to say is that we, I feel like we kind of have to pay, like, just like, what's your other option? Like, we're not going to stiff these vendors because we're not going to make a department cut their budget. So it is what it is. I, wherever my comments are, they're really to say that I don't want a relationship between the city and the council where a department head or an executive or whatever might get the idea that with a controversial item, they can spend the money, put us in this position. And then, I'm not saying that's not, that's necessarily what happened here. I'm not accusing anyone of any, any actual bad intention. I'm simply saying that when you, when this becomes a thing where things that were sort of anticipated ahead of time get voted after the money was expended, it sets a bad precedent that could enable a future actor to ask for forgiveness rather than permission on other things that maybe I wouldn't support quite as much. And so that's, that's, I just want to make this clear. I'm not, I'm not upset at anyone. I liked the event. I went. There were lots of people there. I simply think that in terms of us sticking to best practices, I need to say that this is not how I would like these things to go moving forward. The other thing on the note of best practices, excuse me, is we have, when we were at the event, or sorry, when we were at the Finance Committee meeting, Hadal spoke to us about why, under current guidance, this would be allowable via cannabis. And it was convincing at the time, but I could not repeat it word for word. So I'm hoping that either the mayor or Hadal or somebody on the team could explain why this isn't allowable, because it's not what I, prior to that meeting, would have believed was an allowable expense under cannabis. But the city made a case that in fact, under the current guidelines, it is. And so I'm hoping we could, just for everyone's benefit, hear that again and for my own benefit.
And the mayor, you want to answer or Hadal is here on the call?
I'm happy to, to answer it. And the auditor and I went, so one, I would just like to speak to procedure and take exception. Procedure was followed. It's my understanding, Council President, that I could not bring an appropriation forward to the council without the signing of the auditor to assume that we have money. Is that correct? I did not put this appropriation, nor did I assume it would pass, until I had the documentation that our city auditor asked for. Your job, respectfully, is to say yes or no. That's all. If you say no, then it is for me to go back to the original solution, which was the request of the superintendent of the School Building Community Committee to put this bill onto a 30-year bond. I would like to ask the auditor, through the City Council President, to calculate the opportunity cost lost of $18,000 drawn over a 30-year bond. Additionally, those who cannot afford or just don't want to spend money on food but would take an opportunity for free food, that is their choice. And that's why I suggested cannabis, because it is one's choice to access cannabis or not, especially in a retail dispensary compared to medical. As to the reasonable relatedness of this particular event to our, our host community agreement, reasonable includes not all of the population nor any guaranteeing given by the party signing the host community agreement and the dispensary, that everyone in the community actually benefits or is supposed to benefit in the equal way. It is those impacted. And those groups described in the intent of the legislature upon the first passing of the cannabis laws was education in schoolchildren as well as families. To convene a community celebration on a drug-free, alcohol-free property that everyone in the community is invited, whether they tend or not after COVID, to celebrate a building of wellness and learning, I feel appropriately meets the criteria of reasonably related. Again, I appreciate the council's sentiments and thoughts, but what I do ask is a yes or no. I negotiated the HCA. I know it's allowable. The auditor was concerned about a clawback in coming law that has not been totally fleshed out. I used dispensary money from two dispensaries who signed an amendment saying that they would not clawback and their fees would end going forward. That same amendment has been put out to every dispensary. As of July 2022, I'm sorry, July 1st, 2022, the city of East Hampton is not collecting impact fees because we can't reasonably relate any further money to the impact of cannabis, now that it's a part of our community.
Thank you. Councilor, did I answer your question or you want me to ask Hadal to?
That's fine.
That's fine.
Hadal wants to add to it, that's fine, but that's fine.
It's up to you, is what I'm asking.
I'm satisfied.
Okay. Councilor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think, I appreciate the, my colleague's remarks and, and I understand the mayor's remarks and I agree, actually. I think where I take a little bit of exception is I feel like this is a teachable moment. You know, this is a moment where, yes, we are here to say yes or no. You know, I don't think there's necessarily an obligation for the mayor to, to run things by us before she spends money necessarily, but I think the optics of this do seem excessive. And I think that if we, you know, use this as, as a lesson to move forward, if we're all on the same page and we were all in support of this, I think that maybe the controversy around this could be mitigated and we could have potentially found, if, you know, maybe a middle ground, maybe something a little less extravagant and something that wouldn't have ruffled any feathers and wouldn't have gotten anybody, you know, backed up against the wall. And we would have all felt kind of engaged and empowered. And I think that's the lesson I think that we should be drawing from this is, you know, as we move forward, in situations like this, good communication and, and working together for the benefit of the city, for the benefit of the schoolchildren, using the resources that we have is, is the most important piece. And so I'm definitely going to vote for this because I'm not going to stiff the vendors who already rendered the services right before the holidays. I don't, I think that's a bad look for the council. You know, but I think that as we move forward, using this as, as a way for us to learn is important and, and we have to do that. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilor Trosinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to reiterate a few items, just because I know there'd been a lot of confusion in the community, that the school committee didn't ask for $18,000, or for that matter, ask or authorize, and, and the school building committee didn't ask or authorize any money. None, zero. There was a proposal by, brought forth by the superintendent for a modest amount, and I believe it was $4,700. And if we look at the numbers that Councilor Riley provided, it included things like the logo and $250 here and spreading the word with lawn signs and the t-shirts. I believe the t-shirts were for use by the folks who came in to work on Saturday when the event was held, because it enabled the public to know who was staff, who was there, who was participating in the event, who would give them direction. So all of those expenses seemed reasonable. There was never a proposal for food trucks that was brought forth by anyone. I'm basing this on the review of the September 20th School Building Committee meeting. It was the mayor who said, listen, I don't think we should use tax funds for this. And I know that the chair of the school committee joined in, who was on building committee, and said, no, we cannot use any tax funds for this, any or any bonded monies. But the mayor said, well, I think we're eligible to use cannabis funds. Well, if you're eligible to use cannabis funds, and the mayor said, the mayor knows what, she negotiated the agreements and knows what's going on with cannabis, then you can use cannabis funds. And the mayor said, I think we should provide free food for equitable purposes. And everyone said, well, if, if it's an expense that the mayor approves of and recommends that we do, then we ought to go ahead and do this. So based on all of that, I, I think the vendors came in, they spent, they provided the services, they need to be paid. Now, did the, did the community event? Why have a community event? It was an event for the entire community and that was clear. Anyone could attend, anyone could partake. And it was a combined celebration because there had never been a groundbreaking ceremony or event. I believe when the old school was torn down, there had never been any kind of, well, we completed that and that's good. There had never been any opening ceremonies for the public. This was for the entire community. Well, we just went through COVID. We just went through years of, of, of being kind of locked and tied, having a different life. And I have to agree with the mayor, it probably was a good thing to have a celebration just for the community to be able to heal itself and get together. That the Healthy Youth Coalition had booths, they had a booth there, that the Health Department had a booth, I think, supported the idea that the educational facilities were used in part to help our youth understand the dangers of marijuana and not partaking as underage, but that now we have a different situation for those who are overage. I think that, that makes sense. I think that we were going to have a modest party as proposed by everybody, but the mayor said, let's go forward with a larger one. Everyone else went along with that. Should we have? Well, let me also add, and I'll, I will say, I think it makes sense that we celebrate loudly and clearly that this community has a state-of-the-art school. Why should we do that? Well, we have school of choice slots and those slots are available. Well, we have school of choice slots and those slots are available. We want folks to come in and be able to partake with East Hampton students. They bring money to the community. It will help us balance the school of choice uh, budget situation. So I think in the end that will help bring funds. What about the students? I think one of the most, uh, beautiful, uh, word I heard, uh, was a young student who said, is this school really just for, for, for rich people? Isn't it? It's beautiful. No, it's for everyone here in this community. And we ought to tell the whole world that. So I support that wholeheartedly. Am I happy with the process? No, I'm not happy that any funds go out and get spent without, and then the council comes in after the fact and has to make decisions and kind of, our, our hands are tied behind our back. The money's been spent. Where are we going to, uh, have people get the funds who provided the services? I think there ought to be a way to look at that process and have us come up with a better solution. And I would certainly participate in that process. I'd love to see it done. Am I going to vote yes today? I am. And I'm happy that not a single tax dollar that would, would, would be used on this from the general fund, from the, from the, uh, property taxes. I think we did the right thing. I think, uh, we ought to move forward and put this one to bed.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Riley?
Um, if it's okay with you, uh, Mr. President, could I ask a question of the, um, the auditor? Um, so-
If it related to this appropriation, yes?
Yes. So I want to know if, in your professional opinion, if someone from the office of the inspector general were to look at this specific appropriation, would, in your professional opinion, do you find that they would look at this and say, this is a valid reason to appropriate from the cannabis stabilization fund?
So when I reviewed this account-
Before you go, for the public, this is Hadel Patel, city auditor of the East Hampton, for the record.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, so when I reviewed this appropriation, I asked from mayor if we have, if we are meeting the purpose of the stabilization account. Um, and with that, what opened up is I, we need a, um, return permission from establishment, which mayor mentioned, that we can use it for any purpose other than the impact fee, especially with that, uh, with the lawsuit, which is not finalized yet, but we wanted to make sure that this is all covered on our end. Um, so what we need from audit standpoint of view, I have that. And I, I can't speak to what Attorney General's office is going to come and ask me about the legality, because what, they would ask me more legal question if it's a taxpayers' money. So if it's a tax rate stabilization or general fund or free cash, that would have been a total different story versus this impact fee is driven by host agreement, which is community-based. North Hampton has their, its own, East Hampton has its own, every community has its own. It is not regulated by state. It, it's a community where the administrator decides how to move forward with these establishments. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Hadel. Any other counselors? Seeing none. Anyone from the public have any question of-
I, I don't know if you-
Yeah, mother mayor, go, go first and then I will let the public participate.
I would just remind the council that you do have a choice. You can vote no, and the vendors aren't going to be stiffed. My apologies. This isn't a, this is a totally legal appropriation from the school building fund that I sign off on, that does not need an auditor to sign off on. You realize, I, I just want to make that clear. The reason why money was spent before I even knew about this celebration, it is allowable under our school bond. And when it was brought to the committee, I did not let it go to the vote. Counselor Kuzinski is a hundred percent correct. I said, no, we're not bonding for a party. I will ask for a cannabis appropriation. It would be malpractice for me to say, we're not going to use this pot of money and we're only using cannabis. And I am going to depend on these votes to get what I want. I know better. I've been here five years and I know you have your opinions and your very specific purpose of why you are the legislative body. I can ask, you can say yes or no. Vendors are not going to be stiffed. This was an appropriation that I purposely made when I found out about the expenditures and in my own purview suggested to the school building committee that it be open to everyone. School, the, the food trucks were not a part of that budget because it was pay-as-you-go. And the superintendent was, uh, thinking of getting another one so there wouldn't be long lines. It was I who said, go back to the food trucks and ask them how to pay per meal or by hour. I will totally, it's like when we're walking in there, people should be free to do whatever they want, yea or nay, and not worry about what's in their pockets or their head and enjoy the space. But local vendors, and, and quite honestly, if I had just said yes at that meeting or voted no and everyone else voted yes, the vendors would be paid right now. I don't think eighteen thousand dollars for a, a legitimate, wonderful celebration, and, and maybe it's planned or not, should be financed with a fifty million dollar bond. And as far as process, I will, on the record, take issue. I follow process. You could be upset you don't know about something and I hear it all the time. I wasn't upset when I found out about the celebration. It's just a matter of, of being the executive and making good decisions with the legislative body of the city. It's about the school and the taxpayers. Vote no. I, 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 this for me is a bureaucratic decision because it was made before that meeting and would not have come to this body if myself and the school committee chair said, no, we should not. It's not illegal to use the school bonding money for this. It's not appropriate, in my view. The chair of the school committee agreed. It never went to a vote at the school building committee and never had anything to do with the, the school committee as a whole. The volunteers involved were parents and as I understand, school staff, members of the public, of Board of Health and of, um, the Healthy Youth Coalition and, and I think like Little League and, and PTO and stuff like that. But that's how that came about. I, I just want to be super clear. There's no shell game here. I think it's just better not to put all that interest on eighteen thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Anyone from the public want to participate? Can you please go to the podium and state your name and address for the record? And we, I'm sorry. I just want to set the rules. You have three minutes. Please be respectful, talk about the topic that we are discussing at this time, and please just talk to the council.
All right. I shall prove myself trustworthy. Hi, I'm Megan Harvey. Uh, I live at Twenty-One Button Road, a member of the school committee. Uh, and I just wanted to, um, come up and I tried to take a couple of notes so I would keep it succinct. Um, I just, I guess above all else, we have been trying to forge a path forward between the school and the city side of things that's built on open communication and trust. And a Gazette article that came out with the quotes, some surely taken out of context, some maybe not, some real questions that came from this committee about, um, what keeps being referred to as a party, um, is really not a good look for this, these two groups going together and trying to just build something really wonderful for our community with this brand new school. We have, um, this open house is a triumph. The school's a triumph. There were a ton of community members there beyond just people who attend this school. Uh, we had to use those shuttles for people who were coming in. Anecdotally, when I was in other locations, I was in Westfield and I saw someone from East Hampton and they said, hey, I was just checking out the new school. That's great. This is what we want to have happen. And then for it to go into the paper as a, an eighteen thousand dollar party that ruffles feathers is just a real bummer and disappointment. Let's try to figure out a way where we cannot have it come to this. I, I thank, uh, counselors there for your comments about, uh, the open house, uh, and the mayor for bringing up equity. I'm, I'm not part of the school building committee, nor am I on the group that planned, um, this open house. And so I'm just coming here as a school committee member and a community member saying, thank you for thinking of equity. That, that is really wonderful. I am so glad. I don't, I don't know if I would have thought of that. I'm so glad that when everyone walked up there that day that they could just get food and not worry about it. That was really, I, I attended the event. I saw many of you there. It was really great. I also want to thank, um, those who did volunteer hours and hours and hours of their time planning the open house. Uh, we heard from a few of them at school committee members who are devastated by the way that their role in this has been portrayed. It sounds like they have done something very irresponsible. That's the perception that they are feeling from the community. Um, and I just want to publicly thank them for their efforts and for the major success. I think that's, that's all, really all I want to say. I hope we can just keep moving forward, building this like open communication and trust and transparency. And let's just show this community that we're just, I think we're blossoming into something really beautiful at this, these two new schools and I hope we can keep doing that together.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Take a look again. I don't see anyone else from the public. Any counselor have anything else to add before we take a vote? Counselor Rist?
I just want to thank Megan. She's totally right. I didn't do diligent research when the appropriation occurred. I have to admit I was wrong. And I'm not afraid to do that. A lot of politicians are. I thought this was a school committee appropriation originally, but I was wrong. I don't think I mentioned it at the meeting, but we have a paper now that likes to promote the negative in our community in a lot of respects. I call it tabloid journalism and I'm not afraid to say it. Um, unfortunately misinformation gets out there. And I think I could have done a better job at that meeting as I chaired it to say, this isn't a school committee appropriation. Unfortunately, the mayor had to attend a very important meeting on a superintendent's search. So I don't blame her for not being there, but it did, it did make questions not available to be answered. So for the rest of the council, this was a celebration. I agree totally with how the mayor, Counselor Kuzinski and Counselor Zarrett approached this. And I ask you to, I ask you to vote yes because the community deserved it. They're paying sixty million dollar, fifty million dollar bond. Hopefully it won't come in at sixty million. I've heard that it'll be less, but, uh, it's a lot of money. So they deserved it. Thank you.
Any other counselors before we take the motion? Counselors are ready.
I just want to acknowledge the prior speaker, uh, spot on. And I want to acknowledge the speaker from the public because I think the spirit of what they had to say is very important for us to hold on to and use it as a touchstone going forward in our management dealings, not just with each other on this body, but as a city as a whole. Um, and, um, we're on this together and, um, we could disagree, but we could disagree and be in it together at the same time. So, um, really appreciate this conversation too. So thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make a few comments before we take the motion. First, when we talk about people's money, I prefer to say people's money, the taxpayers' money because it's more accurate. Uh, I think when we talk about people's money, it's when we have to realize, um, how or when we're going to spend it and how, um, we have to take our time to review how we're going to spend it. I hear tonight that eighteen thousand dollars is not too much. One dollar is too much when we're using people's money. I'm not saying the eighteen thousand was too much for this event. I'm saying the eighteen thousand dollar was, is too much because one dollar is too much when it's people's money. And we always have to be aware of that. About this celebration was about that everybody was invited? That's correct. That everybody was allowed to go? That's incorrect. Not everybody was allowed to go because a lot of, a lot of poor people out there, they don't have transportation to go to this event. But at the same time, I have to say that events like this one is, is needed in our community. I do agree with you, Counselor Rist. We, because I live in this community, we're spending a lot of money to pay for those, for that building. For a building that my grandson is going.
Me too.
And I, I'm really happy to pay that extra taxes for having a better place for my grandsons to learn. But at the same time, we have to recognize that every single money that we use in this community, we have to take our time and effort to be, to be sure that we're going to spend it the right way. Cannabis probably is the best way because they impact, I think this is the word that we should use, they impact the tax revenue of the city. But it's still people's money. I will go, I'm going to say yes to this appropriation. And one of the main reasons that I'm going to say yes is because the people we, we're going to pay, they're minorities. The crazy arepas, the Puerto Ricans in Colombia, the Filipinos, they're minorities. That, that's the main reason that I'm going to say yes. The event was great. I was there. And I applaud the mayor about saying no, about using construction money because to me that's a no-no, a huge no-no. How are we going to do a celebration paying for thirty years? That doesn't make any sense. So I applaud you, mayor, for doing that. After saying all that, I, I, I think I have to say yes. Know the ways that we're going to say no. But at the same time, we have to be aware that I hope that didn't happen again with a bigger number. Because maybe eighteen thousand in the budget that we have over fifty million is not that much or sounded in that much. But can you imagine the event was seventy thousand dollars? So we have to think what we do. Barbara? Hello, before Barbara, I need a motion.
That you will get, Mr. President. I move that the city council approve a city supplemental appropriation for costs associated with the Mountain View Grand Opening Public Event. The amount requested is eighteen thousand thirty-five dollars and sixty cents to be transferred from the cannabis stabilization account, eighteen thousand thirty-five dollars and sixty cents to be transferred to the Mountain View School Grand Opening Account, eighteen thousand thirty-five dollars and sixty cents. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, funding for Mounton, Mount View School Grand Opening Event on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion on a second for the supplemental appropriation, eighteen thousand thirty-five dollars with sixty cents for the cannabis stabilization fund to Mount View School Grand Opening Event on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Uh, any further discussion? I do have one just for clarification and this is for, for the residents to understand. These, um, transfer is going to be from the stabilization cannabis funds to a special account just to pay those bills. That's correct, Hadel?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Hadel. Yes. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peake?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Now.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zara?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Say aye, motion passes. Now we have the city ordinance amendment, amendment chapter six, section six twenty-one. Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. So as, um, some people in the community know, we have a, um, new plastic ordinance that will go into effect January first. Um, and some of the pieces of that as- And some of the pieces of that, as our business leaders tried to come into compliance, were having difficulty finding products that were the level of compostable that we had outlined in the ordinance, which was very specific and very rigorous. And so what we did as the ordinance committee was, we went back, we looked at those particular regulations, and we decided to strike those regulations out of the, the overall plastics ordinance. Once we did that, the Board of Health, I think, well, Bree as the, the health enforcement officer, sent out an email to all of the impacted businesses and said, "This is what is going to be taken out of the ordinance. Do you have any problems, any questions, any issues? Email me." Salem Derby, the Chair of Ordinance. I got exactly zero emails. As you can see, we do not have very many concerned business owners in the House. I think that we were able to find the right sections to strike. And so I do have a, a specific list of those sections, and I'll just say them, because I think it's important. So we are striking section, or 6-21.2.1, number 2, compostable plastic bags. Strike 6-21.2.2. Strike 6-21.2.4. And striking 6-21.2.5. All of those mention a certain level of compostability, and that compostability is ASTMD6400, or ASTMD6868, or BPI certified. And the issue was, our local businesses were having a difficult time finding products that specifically met those criteria. And we also do not have online currently, in our region, a industrial composting facility which all of those products would need to be deposited into. So I think that's an important thing to, to recognize. So at this time, I guess I would, you know, I defer to the other members of ordinance if they have any thing to say, or any other councilors.
Any councilor? Councilor Peak?
Yeah, I just want to say, th- this whole process, I really appreciate your leadership on this, Councilor Derby, and, and I really appreciate your leadership, Councilor Zarek, on getting this whole thing up. I also just have to say for myself, this was a bit of a humbling experience, where I think that what we, you know, we were working on something, I was on ordinance at the time, I voted for this, and then I voted for it again at committee, and so did most of you, you know? And now we're looking at it, and, well, some of it was not actually, you know, practical. And there's this part of me that every time I think about this, just kicks myself a little bit, like, how did that, how did that go over my head? You know, when you're on the council, I think you're always kind of drinking from a firehose, like, there's always just so much new information coming at you that it's easy for things to get past you. So I'm not mad at myself or at any of us really for this, but it also, I think, is a valuable learning experience, that when you're in the realm of regulations and ordinances and legislation, there's a lot of people involved, and, you know, a lot of people who mean well, but I think that you have to, like, I think you really need to get into the minutia of saying, if we're asking people to do specifically this, how certain are we that that is actually something that they can do? And I'm not, yeah, I'm, I'm not trying to put any fingers, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm really hoping that we can learn from, just as we were talking about the last thing, using that as a learning experience. I'm hoping that this, too, can be sort of a learning experience for the council when we're talking about things like ordinance, to really get deep into the subject material and, and be certain that what we are actually legislating is practical. It would be a shame if this happened like a bunch of more times.
Thank you. Mr. Rist?
Uh, thank you for the comments so far. I appreciate the ordinance committee acting quickly on this. A couple, couple comments and then, and then one question to the chair. So just also for the public, it's important to know that this, this ordinance actually went into effect January 1st of 2022, and we gave the, the reason there was so much conversation around this, because we gave, we gave retailers and businesses a year to comply, because it was complicated, and it's certainly a switch from their norms. And I want to give the Health Department, the Health Director credit, because there was substantial conversations and communications going back and forth over the last year, just in terms of general notifications, but also singular conversations with businesses about this, which is what brought us to the point we're at now. And so when we first designed this, it was pre-pandemic, and it did look at the time like we were moving in a direction where some of this would be achievable. It was, it was bold, but it looked like the commercial compostability requirement was going to be able to be met because of anticipated services within, in the region, and that certainly changed, I think, probably because of a lot of things, probably mostly because of the pandemic. And, and so I think it's, 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 I think, you know, we have to move with the times. The pandemic changed a lot of things for us. So I, the, the one thing I just want to clarify, just to the, the chair, if I may ask the chair a direct question, Mr. President, is when you, the, the changes you made are just the, the red line items, so, so polystyrene and expanded polystyrene, that's still not allowed. Okay, so you just, and then...
Yes, the only pieces that were changed were the pieces that I mentioned, and that none of those pieces were affected the polystyrene.
Okay, thank you. And then, yeah, I mean, our, our Health Director has been really doing a, a bang-up job in terms of communicating with, with businesses around this, and I, I really appreciate the work that, that she does, and probably will continue to do. There'll be still some ongoing questions around this, but thank you so much to the ordinance committee for responding so quickly. I also appreciate the mayor bringing this forward and responding to the needs of our business owners, and also addressing, you know, to what my colleague to the right said, like, we, this sounded good at the time, and maybe we could've done it, but things changed. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Riley?
Yeah, I mean, you know, at, at that meeting when we were discussing this, you know, Councilor Peak did kind of bring up that, you know, when we are in the business of regulating things, it's really good to know exactly what it is that we're regulating. Now, this was all relatively new to me, you know, I wasn't a counselor, nor on the ordinance committee when this happened, so I just thought, you know, I'm going to take a shot at this, let's see what we're working with here. And trying to understand and build in networks of the types of suppliers and deliverers and, you know, everything that would go into this, it was, it was a disaster to try to understand. And, you know, even some of the places that I could find, you know, I tried contacting them, some places had already gone out of business, probably because of the pandemic, so, I mean, there were just these huge chasms of information that I couldn't find. And, I mean, I've got two master's degrees, I know how to do research, so this felt pretty unfair to force our businesses into this area of unknown information, and, you know, I think eventually, we should reconsider. This shouldn't be a thing that we say no to forever, because I think it's good. But, you know, the pandemic, the global supply chains, everything is just so out of whack right now, and, you know, organizations are just trying to piece themselves back together. I think it's a good thing that we strike this, but in the future, I would like to see ongoing conversations to become more green in the way that we conduct business. But for now, I think this is a good, good thing.
Thank you. Councilor Kozinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank Councilor Derby and the current ordinance committee for their hard work. I mention this because I think it was Councilor Derby, Councilor Tamara Smith, and I who were on the ordinance committee way back when, when this was first broached. It is a very complicated subject, and several other ordinance committees have tried to deal with it. You know, East Hampton is really special. We're special because we try to deal with issues that are complicated. This is a, a, a small committee with expertise, but I don't know of anyone who has particular expertise in this specific area. Most communities are leaving this to the state. Let the state solve the problem. Here in East Hampton, we try to move things along. So Councilor Peak, I'm speaking to you when I say, listen, we're doing our very best, and sometimes we have to a- adjust. We're doing that tonight, and I'm glad we're ahead of the curve.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rist?
I just wanted to speak to my own view on this. Way back when we voted on this, plastics was a terrible word. We see it on our oceans, we see plastic destroying our environment, and it's the idealism that sometimes over, overcomes us, and we, we should do something about it. And I trusted my ordinance committee, and I voted yes, because the ideal of getting rid of plastics, however we could do so, was a good thing to do. But I want to say that it is quite common for the people in the weeds, our Health Department, our businesses, to find the flaws that sometimes we write into law, and it's appropriate to revisit laws. We're doing that in a way with our ordinance reviews now. We're looking for the flaws that were well-intentioned when they were done, but now we have to make changes. And I applaud Councilor Zarek especially for getting this done quickly, as soon as the flaws were found, because our businesses deserve to be able to function. And I applaud Councilor Derby and the whole committee for getting this done in a timely manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Rist. Any other councilors?
Just that, it's, it's also important to note that Hadley is rolling out a ordinance as of January 1st, and it basically mirrors what, what we're doing, like, literally almost to the letter, which I don't know if they borrowed this from, from us, and I'd almost like to imagine that they did, so I'd like to think that we're kind of leaders in the, in the region, but it's, it's literally exactly the same, minus the compostable piece, but, you know, the, bags, takeout containers and straws, it's almost to the letter what we're doing, so, you know, we're going to have an almost neighbor, and Northampton's done the same, too, recently. So, you know, the region's expanding in terms of their, how green they are, and I, I agree with the, the counselor who spoke, that we, we should revisit this when the, when both the supply chains and the, 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 the means to, you know, have commercial composting are available, so I appreciate that sentiment.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Denham?
Yeah. Well done to everybody. I, I think this is great, and I just, I want to reiterate that I, we shouldn't be afraid to put ordinance like these laws in place that address what is happening to our environment and to our planet. And so I just want to emphasize, yes, there's a hiccup in this, but that shouldn't deter us from constantly trying to, to improve our environment and, and, and our community. And I think that if, if places like Hadley or Northampton, you know, model that, that's, that's great, and I think that we should always be thinking about, how do we improve the future for, for our kids?
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone from the public want to participate in this public hearing? I see one online, I'm going to apologize if I mispronounce your name. I think it's Lisel, Olaisel?
Liesel?
Olaisel?
I can't see your, oh, yeah, Liesel.
Yes, it's Lizo, like weasel.
Ah, sorry.
Hello!
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, my name is Liesel DeBoer. I live at 1193 North Hampton Street in Holyoke, but I'm the Director of Operations and the store manager of the River Valley Co-op at 228 North Hampton Street in East Hampton.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you so much to all of you for your leadership in this realm, and also for your sympathy with the incredible challenges with the supply chain that we have had. The Co-op made a decision in 2019 to do our very best to move to all compostable containers, and it has been challenging. In some of the containers, there just isn't an option, and there is a big difference for our great restaurants in town who are sending food into containers for just the trip home versus retailers like the Co-op and the Big E who have to make sure that that food has integrity on the, in the coolers for a number of days, and that's certainly where the challenge is. I wanted to just say, I appreciate the flexibility here, I applaud the, the banning on Styrofoam, and I want to let other businesses know that we continue to work on sourcing compostable containers, and we are a resource for other people if they want information about our suppliers. And I also want to say, from a business perspective, it's great to have a, an even playing field, because compostables cost significantly more than recyclables and non-recyclables, and so I'm glad that, that we're all in it together. So that's just what I wanted to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, Councilor Derby?
I'd like to make a motion to amend Chapter 6, Section 6-21, and the aforementioned sections of 6-21, the use of plastic bags and disposable food containers.
Second?
We have a motion on a second to City Ordinance Amendment, Amendment, amend Chapter 6, Section 621, prohibited, prohibition of single-use plastic bags and disposable food container. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes. Let's go back to reports of standing committees. Property, Councilor Kozinski?
With nothing on our, on our agenda, no report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Rules and government relationship, relations? Councilor Rist?
Yes, I will hold a meeting, January 11th, at 6:15, following the Finance Committee meeting. Councilor Kozinski, I'm hoping you can attend, because Councilor Denham and I are on the Finance Committee, and it was efficient to hold the Rules meeting that evening. If you can't make it, I, in, in respect for you, I will try to reschedule. So I don't know what you're doing on the 11th, but I hope you can make it.
What time?
6:15, it'll be a hybrid meeting.
I think he wants to join us.
That concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Rist. New business, Councilor Derby?
I would like to move the Library Financial Report to Finance, please.
Second?
We have a motion on a second to move the Library Financial Report to Finance Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye. Motion passes. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Someone, second?
Second?
We have a motion in a second to adjourn, Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye!
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Sure you don't want to stay?
Happy holidays?
Happy holidays. JP Kozinski?
We have to sign some things, right?
Yep.
Happy holidays, everybody. Have a great night. Bye.
Megan, I have to compliment you on how disciplined and wonderful you're.